Ladies, rise and hand the flags. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
On Saturday, November 3, 2013, Oregon City Department responded to a 9/11 call in Oregon City. The house was on fire and an armed man was at the site in the moments that ensued. Oregon City Reserve Officer Robert A. Lipke was shot. Officer Lipke died of his injuries the next day at Legacy Emmanuel Hospital in Portland. We are here this evening to honor a great man, a respected officer, friend, and a hero. I would like to introduce to you Chaplain Mike Vermiss of the Oregon Fallen Badge Foundation and also the chaplain with the Clackamas County Sheriff's Office who will give an invocation. Would you bow your heads and pray with me? The Lord, you are a light and you are hope. You are a stronghold and a mighty tower. You allow us to have a heart of courage and a heart of strength. We are grateful, God, that you are a patient God. We humbly pray to make your presence felt among us and within us. We also pray for the Lipke family. God, we pray for your courage and your control, that you would allow that control of fears, as there are many, even as we are afraid of possible failure and even success. But we are afraid, knowing that even in the fear that walks among us, that there is hope and there is a great courage. And we're reminded of that courage, the courage of the Spirit that you really felt and gave Officer Lipke, who is now beyond fear. But, Lord, we pray that his spirit would just continue to move forward, that it would only serve to inspire each and every one of us to live more bravely, trusting in love, trusting in honor, and walking in that sweet victory over fear. And, God, I also pray for this department and this city. Lord, for each of these men and women who serve boldly, that even when it seems that there is darkness amongst us, they walk boldly and with hope and courage they come running. And so, Lord, I pray that you would give them strength and hope and courage. And also, God, I pray for their families, that you would watch and protect them and that you would give them peace. And we ask these things in your name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you very much. I think our members of our commission would like to express their condolences and their feelings, and I'm going to start with our Commissioner, Commissioner President Roth.
Good evening. I didn't have the privilege of knowing Officer Lipke. I wish I had, but judging from the officers that I do know on the Bureau, I have every confidence that he was an example of excellence in every service that he performed. His passing breaks my heart, and to his wife and family, know that you have been in my prayers and will continue to be in my prayers. That goes too for the officers that he served with. My prayers are with you every day. This poem speaks to his family but also to his brothers on the force. "He put on the blue late one cold winter night, his badge upon his chest, polished so bright; though his badge was old, it shined like new, for it was much loved by this man in blue. His badge was his promise to all who came his way; 'I am here to serve you,' it seemed to say. A silver star with edges straight and true, just like the heart of this man in blue. He didn't see the gun that took his life; he slipped away, crying out for his wife. His broken badge clung bravely to his chest, a shattered witness to his last breath. His badge, once shiny, bright and new, now lies broken, bent and blue; a silver star, now broken in two, just like the hearts of his brothers in blue." Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you to all of you.
Commissioner Smith.
This has been a heart-wrenching week for our entire community. As a son of a retired Oregon City Police Officer, a brother-in-law of a current officer, my connection to the Oregon City Police Department has always been strong. Some of my closest family friends have worked or currently work at the department. The Oregon City Police Department is family. All of these amazing people commit themselves to a job of service, risking their lives every day to protect others, as Officer Lipke did. Words cannot convey what I feel inside my heart about the events of the last few days. I thought of two words for tonight: thank you. Thank you to all the city staff who put aside their emotions, who delayed their grieving, and who continue to cope with this tragedy and all of the obligations that it has brought while continuing to do their own jobs keeping this city running. Thank you to the entire Oregon City Police Department and all of the many fire departments, police departments, and emergency government agencies throughout the region who have helped protect our community and have continued to support us in our loss. Thank you to the citizens of Oregon City, the state of Oregon, and beyond, for your thoughts, your prayers, your donations to the department, and the family of Officer Lipke in this time of need. Thank you Chief Jim Band, whose leadership, compassion, professionalism, and heart is a beacon of stability for all of us. Thank you Tony Conkle for your tremendous leadership as acting city manager, and thank you to our city manager David Frazier, thank you for your exhausting work over the last few days. I greatly appreciate the effort that you made to keep the entire commission updated on the events of the last few days in every critical moment. Thank you to Reserve Officer Robert Lipke. Thank you for your dedication as a reserve officer. Thank you for your commitment to protect our city at all costs. Thank you for your service. I'm honored to have met you.
Thank you. Commissioner Mullins.
I'm humbled by all of the support from our community and beyond. We have other police agencies watching our streets so that our citizens will be safe and our police officers can be home with their families grieving the loss of their friend and fellow officer. I feel the best way we can honor his memory is to continue to support his family and contribute to the fund they had set up at the Clackamas Federal Credit Union. And thank you all. I really appreciate everything you have done. Thank you.
Commissioner Paul.
It's hard to know what to say or find the words when the unfathomable happens, but I'm so proud of our police family, city leadership, the entire community, and how neighboring jurisdictions offered aid and support. My heart, thoughts, and prayers go out to Officer Lipke's family. We honor his service.
Thank you. I wanted to comment that we have received many emails, messages, letters, expressing help, I think all of us have, expressing condolence for the loss of Officer Lipke. They've been from city leaders, congressional officers, many citizens throughout the whole region. Prior city manager Brian Nakamura, who is now has a position in California, has sent us his condolences as well. There have been numerous organizations and groups that have offered to provide and have provided support and assistance to Officer Lipke's family and to members of our police force. This period has been very difficult for Officer Lipke's fellow officers. Although we and they know the risk of injury and death is always there, the actual loss hits hard. As Commissioner Mullins mentioned, we had given officers time off to be with their families. We have had tremendous support from our neighboring jurisdictions and their public safety officers providing the support that we needed in this city. And also, the Portland Police Department has provided valuable support and assistance while Officer Lipke was in surgery and in the critical care unit. I've been informed that the football game on Friday, there will be a moment of silence and there will be a release of boons at that event. There will be a service open to the public. I don't think we know the time and the place of that, or at least we don't have the time. Commissioner, Commissioner Mullins mentioned the fund that's been set up by the Clackamas Police Officers Benevolent Foundation. It is the Officer Robert Lipke Fund at Clackamas Federal Credit Union. I think it's been difficult for us all. It's probably been very difficult for our city manager David Frazier, who wasn't here but has been in constant communication with us, and will have some things to say. Commissioner, Commissioner, excuse me, I got a note and I got sidetracked there. Tony Conkle, Commissioner Smith mentioned Tony Conkle, who was our acting city manager. He's been tremendous in communicating with us and working with the city, with the police chief and so forth. He's done a tremendous job, as you well know. The staff has also been hit hard by this event. It's not only the police, but the whole community of the city of Oregon City has felt the impact of this. We've all been teary-eyed in this period. I'll have a few other words to say, and we're going to have a proclamation. We're going to come back, we're going to take a break, but we'll come back to citizens' comments after we read the proclamation. I just wanted to talk about the order because it's been changed somewhat. David, I'd like to invite you to go ahead and-
Thank you, Your Honor. Well, I got the news of Officer Lipke's injury and ultimately his death. First, by a text from one of our commission members when I'm on the other side of the world, leading a group of delegates from across North America on a trip as guests of the Japanese government. And then there were a series of phone calls from both Chief Band and Mr. Conkle. And, you know, we did our best to map out a strategy and a plan on how to try to cope with this situation. It was, it was heart-wrenching for me, but very, very difficult to be gone from your city at such a critical time. So a few hours later, I'm on a train to Tateshina, Japan, our sister city, and it's a pretty fast train they have over there, so I didn't have a lot of time to think all this through, but I did have a little bit, a little bit of time. When I got off the train there, I was met by some Japanese officials, and there was an interpreter there, and she said, "You seem sort of distracted." And I said, "Well, I am." And I told her about Officer Lipke, and Japanese are ever-efficient, and so I was quickly shuttled into a large Toyota van and hustled off to Tateshina. And they have a surprisingly large city hall for a small city because they do all the school services and they have a broader footprint of services that they provide. So it was a pretty large building, pretty impressive building. And so, we pull up there in this big circle drive and stop the van, and before I can even get the door open, the two officials that are driving the van jump out of the van, run up to their flagpoles, and lower their flags to half-staff for the rest of the day. They gave me those flags to bring back to Oregon City. So it's been, it's been tough. I think some of the more difficult days are ahead. These kind of events bring me back to my earliest days in a career in law enforcement. There are men and women in uniforms that have covered our city bravely in this time of need. Our fellows, our officers, are going to be back on the streets today, tonight, and as they're out there driving around, they're going to be questioning and wondering about their priorities and their career choices and asking those difficult tactical assessment questions about what could we have done different or better and what can we learn from this? That's natural, that's going to happen. I just want you guys to know, we're with you all the way, every day, all across the state, all through this community, across the world. We're with you, we're all one. So, thank you so much.
Does anybody else want to, among staff-
I think I can, I can make it through a couple of quick things. I have to, I have to say a couple of things just about the help that we've had. All the neighboring cities, Westland, like Oswego, Gladstone, Canby, Milwaukee, the help and the things that they've done, I said to somebody that I've, for the first time in my life, started feeling like the word, like, when you say "thank you," you say "thank you" when somebody gives you a cup of coffee. And to say the same thing when somebody does what people have been doing for us as when somebody hands you coffee or gets a door for you, it's, it's an insult to, to the help that we've had because it's, the little moments and the thoughtful things that people have done have been amazing. The Clackamas County Sheriff's Office has been amazing in their support, right down to things like a SWAT team that, you know, when you still have a threat in your city that needs to be dealt with, and we have people on this interagency team, to be able to rely on things like that, and when I say "things like that," I mean people. People who are, who know what the threat is, who know that somebody's already been shot, and in spite of that, while everyone's running away, they're running to the scene as fast as they can to, to fix it and to make it okay for everybody who lives nearby to be safe and to walk around and do what they do. And you're in good hands with everybody who's standing at the back of this room. Everybody's out there working, everybody can't be here right now. This city's in damn good hands. We have an incredible department of well-trained people who care more than you will ever understand about this city. And in spite of what, what you all know about the risks, which we forget sometimes, a vest becomes something that's just an encumbrance and uncomfortable, and a gun is a piece of metal that gets heavy on your, on your waist after years, and you forget why it's there, the reality of its purpose sometimes. What, what I am proud of about what we do is that knowing what just happened, the people standing in the back of this room will do that for anybody in this community who calls tonight and says, "There's another fire in my neighborhood and there's somebody with a gun." And I'm proud of all of you for saying, "I will call me and I will go take care of that problem." And thank all of you for the city and the, the city's support from every staff member has been tremendous, and thank you for all your words.
Thank you. Absolutely.
"Whereas the city of Oregon City, Oregon, has suffered an unfathomable loss with the recent murder of Reserve Officer Robert Lipke on November 3, 2013. Whereas fallen Officer Lipke served the citizens of Oregon City as a most valuable public servant since 2009. And whereas Officer Lipke demonstrated his concern for the welfare and well-being of his community by his actions both in his private life and by his participation in numerous community activities and projects of local and regional nature," one of which is there on the screen, incidentally, "and whereas Officer Lipke's service was given with such devotion that year in the respect, admiration, and friendship of citizens of our community throughout his professional leadership and dedication. And whereas the city of Oregon City is deeply indebted to Officer Lipke for his service to our community, and whereas law enforcement is an honorable, hard-working profession that diligently seeks to make our communities more livable and safe, and whereas there is no greater sacrifice an officer can make for their community than to give their life. And whereas the murder of a police officer shocks the very soul of a community, our government, and the very freedoms the officer has sworn to protect. And whereas the impact of this tragedy upon Officer Lipke's family, friends, department, and community is immiserable, therefore, I Doug Neely, Mayor of Oregon City, along with the city commission and the cities, the citizens of Oregon City, extend heartfelt condolences to the family of Officer Robert Lipke. We mourn the loss of Officer Lipke's valuable public, of our city's public servant, and pray for the healing and hope in this time of need." And I will be then signing this. We are going to, I have another proclamation to read. We are going to have, as I mentioned, public, public testimony as part of our, as part of our regular meeting, but I'm sure there are several members of the public that will wish to speak to this tragedy. I wanted to mention now that we will not be answering any questions about the incidents. There's still investigation going on. We won't be asking, we will not be responding any questions about, about the incident. I did want to make a statement, however. After Officer Lipke had fallen, police action at the site was directed at preventing injury and additional loss of life of citizens and the officers at the scene. The gunman was, the gunman was still present and armed. Without the action they took, given the state of mind of the gunman, the state, this city may have, the city may have averted the kind of carnage that we have seen in other communities because of the actions that the police took. We really appreciate what was done there. It was very difficult, I think, on everybody that was there, and it's difficulty on all of us that have heard this, that have heard about it. I am going to read another proclamation, and then we're going to take a bit of a break before we come to citizens' comments. I think I'll make an exception if, after I read the second proclamation, if there are any, if there are any of you police officers that wish to speak before we take our break, I'll invite you to come up without signing up on this. This is the proclamation, the observance of Veterans Day, which will observe on November 11, 2013, honoring Oregon City employees and citizens who are veterans or are currently serving in the military reserve or National Guard. Whereas the freedoms we enjoy as Americans have been purchased and maintained at a high price throughout our history, and whereas honorable service performed in the defense of our nation is the highest form of citizenship, and whereas 27 Oregon City employees, which is approximately 20 percent of the city's workforce, are veterans or are currently members of the armed services, and whereas the city of Oregon City is an employer supporter of the Guard and Reserve, and whereas at the state level approximately 30,700 Oregonians have served in Iraq and Afghanistan since 9/11, and whereas over 2,000 Oregonians remain deployed to Afghanistan, and whereas 138 Oregon veterans have made their ultimate sacrifice while serving in Iraq and Afghanistan, and whereas in conjunction with Veterans Day observance on November 11, 2013, the city of Oregon City is proud to recognize the men and women who have served to protect our freedom, and whereas our hearts and thoughts go out to many killed in action or disabled while serving in their country. Now, therefore, I Doug Neely, Mayor of Oregon City, do call upon all employees and citizens to observe Veterans Day with appropriate ceremonies in honor, in honor of those who have served to preserve the principles of justice, freedom, and democracy, and then I will be signing this on this day. If there's anybody among the force that wishes to make some comments, please do so. I understand that you're a grief stick and then you may not wish to, but is there anyone that does want to speak? If not, we'll go ahead and take a break, and then we'll come back to citizens' comments after that, about 10 minutes. Thank you so much for your service, gentlemen, ladies. The commission meeting will start with-
Everything's gone from my screen.
Oh, 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 gotta switch it.
That's right, me too. I don't, I don't have, I don't have a functioning screen and everybody else does, so I'm at a disadvantage.
Sorry.
But Kathy Roth has been so kind to make sure that, she tried that, didn't work. I'm dead. I mean, I'm not dead. That's dead, I'm not dead. We'll go on to citizen comments, and I don't, oh, I don't have the names, and so I'll have our city recorder give them to me.
Mr. Becker and Mr. Guile.
Please speak in that order.
Hi, William Becker, Oregon City. And I, I can't do anywhere near the justice that other people on the commission have already done on this, but I wanted to express my condolences to, for the department, the staff, the city, and for Officer Lipke's family and friends as well. I know it's a hard time, and I've been very impressed with the logistics and how things worked. I was at my favorite haunt, a coffee shop downtown, when the reverse 911 call came in, and I was, I was very impressed at how the systems worked under all of that pressure. And I've, part of what I do puts me on the streets of Oregon City late at night, and I've always been very grateful for a very friendly but watchful presence on the streets. And again, my condolences to everybody and thank you. Just one other thing, too. One of the things I'd like to maybe suggest, we have so many politics in town in such a times, maybe we can use this as a time to help really work together and appreciate everybody and work for some positive solutions this way. Thank you.
Thank you, William, and thank you for mentioning actually the reverse 911. I think it was during Chief Conrad's period of time that got in and put in place. It may have been through the Hallow County, but we heard about it and we never had the opportunity to find out how it worked, and it appears to be extremely efficient. We both, we all got the, the notice of staying in your house, and then when that warning could be lifted, we got the call to say it was lifted, I think. It was, I was very impressed by the system. Thank you for bringing that up.
Guile, Oregon City resident. I'd expressed my condolences as well. I don't want to repeat what everyone else has said, but I have told a few other individuals here something that started, that at least I've seen starting in our neighborhood, and that is that several of the households in Trailview are starting to put up blue lights in all their front lights, porches, and along the garages, and they're changing out their clear lights to blue lights this week. So I've seen a few starting in our neighborhood, and it might be a suggestion for any support in our city for individuals to do the same.
Good thought, thank you.
Out of respect, thanks.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Great idea.
Nice. And we have one more speaker, Jonathan Stone.
Well, maybe, as you come forward, maybe, maybe Commissioner Polly wants to introduce- who he is. He's going to do it himself, but.
Well, I would be more than happy to. I would like to introduce Jonathan Stone, and he's our new Main Street Oregon City Director, Executive Director. And he comes from Boston, and we're very excited to have him here. He's going to get webbed feet, I'm sure. And I'll let him finish.
Thank you, thank you. And Commissioner Polly is our commission member to the Main Street Board.
Thank you, Carol. So, this is sort of an unfortunate day to be introducing myself, but I just wanted to stop by at Carol's invitation to mention that I took the job as Main Street Director about three weeks ago. And through, over those three weeks, I've had the opportunity to meet several of you, as well as City Manager Fraser, a number of the staff, Mayor Neely, and that it's, the more time I spend here in Oregon City, I'm thrilled. But our work downtown, to continue our work downtown, and that the organization, Main Street, is comprised of a dedicated group of volunteers that are passionate about the success. And it's, I told myself I couldn't do this. It's a very emotional day.
Just don't pack your bags yet. It'll dry out eventually around here.
Actually, my bags are still in Boston, so I guess you could send me.
Well, leave those packed and move them on to Oregon City.
Actually, no, I'm, I'm moving out of the week of Thanksgiving, so I will be officially an Oregon City resident. I'm actually kind of living on an air mattress inside of an apartment right now. But the, the community that we have is, is a lot to be proud of as the first city, and I'm confident that there'll be much more as our work downtown continues. So, I just wanted to share that we do have a newsletter that we recently set up that can be joined on our website, and I encourage all of you and anybody who's watching on TV or online, to go to downtownoregontity.org to, and click on the link to join our newsletter. And that's something where we will use to announce events and new businesses, you know, through, of course, through all the other normal channels. But for instance, announcement, once I get enough people to join the list, that I can send an email to, was, is like Renee's on Main just opened, and it's a great new bar and restaurant. And Renee, who had recently purchased a home in Oregon City, chose to locate on Main Street because she's excited about how far Main Street has come and where it is headed. And I should add that after extensive renovation of her space, it's actually turned out very nice. But today it's just me introducing myself.
I couldn't have more than the time says. Right ahead.
Yeah. In the near future, I look forward to presenting our organization's upcoming work plan and understand that, that, and presenting what we understand to be our priorities in revitalizing, the next priorities, rather, in revitalizing downtown. And I also look forward to very soon expanding upon what our Main Street Oregon City's intentions to be more open and collaborative. Again, I ask that everyone here tonight, please visit us online, join our newsletter, but more importantly, it's an opportunity to learn how to volunteer. And my apologies, I can't stay for the entire meeting. I have about probably three hours of work to do tonight before tomorrow morning, so, but thank you for your time.
Thank you and welcome. And I heard rumors to the effect that you're going to have, try to get a court ruling to reverse the coin toss. You know, we really don't care because it's just stumped down to us.
Well, I, I was a resident of Boston and surrounding suburbs for 10 years. I'm happy to be a resident, resident of the Portland area now, so it's time for a change.
Welcome, Jonathan.
Thank you, welcome, yes, welcome very much.
Okay. With that, we've, we've reduced our agenda. Some of the items that we had originally on our agenda have been, have been done away with, no postponed, excuse me. And then we're going to the second reading of ordinance number 13-1001, amending Title 13 of the Oregon Municipal Code by adding new chapters relating to utility facilities and right-of-way and a few other amendments. And I'll go head back to the staff on the code, on the second reading. Any, any further reports that we need, or we can presume, proceed into the motion for the second reading.
Feel free to.
Okay.
I do need to submit something for the record, though.
Okay, go right ahead.
Okay. The first reading, as you know, of this ordinance was approved unanimously on October 16th, and since that time, the city received questions on the ordinance from Northwest Natural and also a comment from TW Telecom on insurance matters. The city responded to these questions but found no need to make changes to the ordinance. So, the, the same ordinance that you, that you had on first reading is here tonight on second reading.
Move to approve second reading and final adoption of ordinance number 13-1014. Second.
This is ordinance number 13-1014, an ordinance of the City of Oregon City, amending Title 13 of the Oregon City Municipal Code in parentheses, Public Services, close parentheses, by adding a new chapter, 13.34, relating to utility facilities and public right-of-way, deleting Chapter 12.12 in parentheses, Utility Wires and Poles, close parentheses, and amending Chapter 12.04 in parentheses, Streets, Sidewalks, and Public Places, close parentheses, and Chapter 13.24 in parentheses, Telecommunications Facilities, close parentheses.
Vote, roll call, please.
Commissioner Polly.
Aye.
Commissioner Mum.
Aye.
Commissioner Roth.
Aye.
Commissioner Smith.
Aye.
And Mayor Neely.
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero.
With that, we'll get highlighted in a minute. This is the second reading of ordinance 13-10015, an ordinance of the City of Oregon City granting a non-exclusive franchise to Comcast Oregon to operate and maintain a cable system within the City of Oregon City. Do you want to make some comments there, too, I believe?
Yes, just a few. Okay, again, tonight you have the second reading of the Comcast franchise ordinance, granting the non-exclusive franchise to Comcast using the, the city's version of the, the ordinance. At that time, last time, you had two versions given to you, and you chose the city's ordinance. The, we have with us this evening Sanford Inouye from Comcast. We did receive a letter from him, which you have at the dais there, and he was objecting to the city's version of the agreement and inviting the city back into negotiations. At the October 16th meeting, the commission passed a motion to begin the formal review process established in the Cable Act if Comcast did not sign the agreement within 60 days after its, after approval. So this process, this formal process includes specific steps to be followed in granting or denying a renewal franchise, and both parties would be able to negotiate the key issues during that process. Our franchise attorney Nancy Werner is here with us by phone this evening if, if there are any questions, but also Sanford has requested to, to speak.
Come forward if you wish.
Thank you, Mayor Neely. Commissioners, first of all, on behalf of all of us at Comcast, our sincere condolences on passing Officer Lipke, also to his colleagues and comrades on the force, our sincere condolences on that. Thank you. Tonight, briefly, I would like to just share our view with the City Council, City Commission on the process that is on the agenda for tonight. As you may recall, on the, on the last public meeting we had on the franchise, we had requested that it be postponed so that the parties could be back to the table and negotiate a franchise that would be mutually acceptable by both parties. We believe that is the best route to have a compromised, mutually agreed-upon franchise and not really go through the process of a formal process because it's a partnership between the city and Comcast, and best route to take would be a negotiated compromise route with a renewed franchise. The formal process is a process that's rarely used only when the parties are not able to reach an agreement. And that process is provided for under the Cable Act, the Federal Cable Act, which pretty much sets forth the requirements and provisions and the guidelines for the formal process. Our view with the formal process is, is a lengthy process and can be very costly because there are certain things that needs to be done by the city. First of all, with the formal process, an ascertainment will probably need to be done by the city to determine the community needs and interests in consideration of the costs. City will probably need to hire a consultant to perform that ascertainment. Once that ascertainment is done, that ascertainment is shared to Comcast so that we can review that ascertainment, to review the community needs and interests. We may at that time do our own ascertainment based upon that ascertainment done by the city. In general, our experience has been that an overwhelming majority of our customers do not watch public education, government access programming, and do not want to support public education, government access. Having said that, it doesn't mean that there is no room for public access in Oregon City. So, with that ascertainment, we are, would be providing a proposal to the city. Once we submit the proposal, then the city is up to four months to consider that proposal and to issue a preliminary ruling to grant or to deny our proposal. If it's a denial, then the process moves on to a contested case scenario where probably an administrative law judge would be used to preside over the proceeding, where the parties would have the ability to present evidence, compel production of documents, cross-examine witnesses, et cetera. Then the city would have the ability to, in the final version, to grant a franchise or to deny it in final. If it's a denial in final, then the remedies on the Federal Cable Act provides for review either with the state or federal court through that proceeding. So it's a long process, and it can be a very costly process. So again, we respectfully request that the City Council would reconsider its action tonight and postpone the action to adopt a franchise that has not been mutually agreed upon by the parties. Thank you very much.
I'd like to ask Nancy Werner, she has any comments.
Thank you, Mayor, and appreciate, appreciate hearing. The only thing I would say is, if the commission moves forward with the direction given at the first reading on this ordinance, which is to grant the franchise and give Comcast 60 days to accept it or reject it, there's nothing stopping the parties from further negotiations in that 60-day period. So, this is not a vote to immediately move to the formal process. It gives Comcast 60 days to consider the proposal that the city has put together. It also gives the parties 60 days to continue to negotiate if Comcast wants to make some progress on some of the key issues that the city has identified. And, you know, I don't think that the formal process has to be as long and expensive as Comcast is saying that it would be. But I do agree with, with Mr. Inouye, that that's not the route that the city wants to go. We are hoping to reach an agreement through negotiations, but we have not been able to get there. That is why the process is in the place where it is now. With that, does anybody have any questions for me?
The only one, I guess, that comes to mind, we've, we've been extending the current contract for some time, is that correct?
Yes, for four years. Four years.
Four years.
Yeah. And I think we gave fairly clear direction that we wanted to proceed. It may be true that most of the people you poll aren't interested in public access, but it's always amazing to me, and I'm sure other commissioners have had that experience, of people coming up and saying, "I saw you on TV. I know I haven't, I know I haven't been arrested lately, so that hasn't been the reason for it."
I was going to comment that.
I hope you never.
Not in the last 70 years, so.
So, yes, I would have to agree. I respectfully disagree. I think public education is important, and I think our citizens watch it, so.
It's a very important service. It is. I think it's our obligation to provide that.
So, yeah, I'm just giving you a hint, when you go through negotiations, you probably won't find a terribly receptive commission in terms of that particular issue.
No. So with that, I would like to move for second reading and final adoption of ordinance number 13-1015.
Second.
Second reading.
This is ordinance number 13-1015, an ordinance of the City of Oregon City, granting a non-exclusive franchise to Comcast of Oregon, Roman numeral two, Inc., to construct, operate, and maintain a cable system within the City of Oregon City.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Polly.
Aye.
Commissioner Mum.
Aye.
Commissioner Roth.
Aye.
Commissioner Smith.
Aye.
And Mayor Neely.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
And then we proceed on to another ordinance. Another second reading of ordinance annexing 69 acres, Hocken Boulevard to the City of Oregon City, and approving the election results. This is elected on, was it last year?
Yes.
On the ballot, and we have to go through this formal procedure, even though it effectively is approved by the voters.
Because of your charter.
Because of our charter.
Move, oh. Go ahead. Move to approve second reading and final adoption of ordinance number 13-1010.
Second.
Moved and seconded.
Commissioner Polly. Oh, I'm sorry, excuse me.
That's okay. A mistake I always make.
You.
Almost.
This is ordinance number 13-1010, an ordinance annexing certain property to the City of Oregon City and approving the election results for AN 12 dash 01.
Thank you. Now, the roll call, please.
Commissioner Polly.
Aye.
Commissioner Mum.
Aye.
Commissioner Roth.
Aye.
Commissioner Smith.
Aye.
Mayor Neely.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
We have, from that same election, we've had other annexations, and we're having now a second reading for the annexation of 11.93 acres on Beaver Creek Road.
I would like to move the second.
Oh, I'm, excuse me, I'm on the wrong one. I'm on the second reading of ordinance annexing 0.3 acres on Leroy Lane to the City of Oregon City. My apologies. You can, you can do that one instead if you want to.
I'll move to approve.
Okay.
Second.
That's second reading and final adoption.
Second reading.
This is ordinance 13-1011, an ordinance annexing certain property to the City of Oregon City and approving the election results for AN 12 dash 02.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Polly.
Aye.
Commissioner Mum.
Aye.
Commissioner Roth.
Aye.
Commissioner Smith.
Aye.
And Mayor Neely.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
And now we will call to the one I was mentioning, the, a second reading for an annexation of 11.93 acres on Beaver Creek Road, Oregon City.
Move to approve second reading and final adoption. And final adoption.
13-1012.
Of 13-1012.
Second.
This is ordinance number 13-1012, an ordinance annexing certain property to the City of Oregon City and approving the election results for AN-12-03.
And then there was a fourth, there was a fourth annexation.
Excuse me, we need a vote.
Excuse me, roll call.
You are just on a roll tonight.
Commissioner Polly.
Aye.
Commissioner Mum.
Aye.
Commissioner Roth.
Aye.
Commissioner Smith.
Aye.
Mayor Neely.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Then there was a fourth annexation on that ballot, and now we're going to have the, the motion for annexing 0.89 acres on Maple Lane Court.
Move to approve second reading and final adoption of ordinance number 13-1013.
Second.
This is ordinance number 13-1013, an ordinance annexing certain property to the City of Oregon City and approving the election results for AN 12-04.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Polly.
Aye.
Commissioner Mum.
Aye.
Commissioner Roth.
Aye.
Commissioner Smith.
Aye.
Mayor Neely.
Aye.
I'd like to make a comment, and then I made a mistake in, in terms of the agenda, but the comment I had to make, I think, is one that I made before. When voter annexation was approved in Oregon City, until we had the recession, every one of those annexations were, were being voted in. of those annexations were being voted in. With the recession and a lot of the developments stopping, some of them only one-fifth completed, we saw the failure of annexations, even those smaller than an acre. In fact, there was a series of no annexation approvals. All the ones that were on the previous, on this November ballot of last year did pass, and I think what we saw was not a, what some people perceive as a failure of our, of our policy that takes annexation to the vote of the public, but I think what we saw was a reaction to the economy of the time. Now, the mistake I made was I didn't ask for the approval of the agenda, and I do know that there's a desire to pull a couple of the items off the consent agenda, so.
Actually, I got my questions answered, so.
So it's not necessary. So I still apologize. I should have made the request in any case.
That's okay.
Then you want to take the responsibility?
Yes, I would move to approve the consent.
Very good.
Second.
That, no discussion, so we'll go right on to the roll call.
Commissioner Polly?
Aye.
Commissioner Mum?
Aye.
Commissioner Roth?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Neely?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Well, thank you very much. With that, I think we'll go to the city manager's report, which I think that we're waiting for with big breaths.
Well, I had an amazing experience the last two weeks in Japan, and until the last three or four days, it was a very positive, positive experience, and even that had some positive aspects to it. I plan to prepare a much more detailed presentation for the commission. I'll have a lot of photographs and pictures and give you more of the rundown, but essentially our delegation, we met with the Ministry of Internal Affairs because they wanted to explain to us how the Japanese government works. It's rather fascinating. A lot of it came from post-war occupation and/or post-war, I don't know if you would call it negotiations with the United States. I don't think there was very much negotiating going on, but some of the models that they have, they got, they got many of those things from the United States. They call their states prefectures instead of states. And so after we left Tokyo, which is in and of itself a prefecture, I think about 28 million people live in the greater Tokyo metro area, 14 million in the city itself. Then we, from there, we traveled to Tokushima Prefecture. Tokushima has about 800,000 people in the prefecture, and it's mostly Tokushima City. They're famous for some things like indigo dyeing products, that they make paper by hand, which I told Eric I might have some, some more work for him to do on that because I see some synergy between paper making there by hand and paper making here like we were doing before. And it's a kind of artisanal paper. I'll actually bring, I was able to make three postcards such as they were. It looks a little bit like kindergarten art, so please, please, but the paper itself is...
You weren't criticizing the paper, you were.
I'm criticizing the artist, yeah. They're also famous for their ramen noodles and certain other agricultural things there. And it was an amazing trip, but it was, they crammed a lot in. I mean, there were days where we were 12 hours going from site to site, place to place. Because I was the group leader, I had to make speeches, sometimes impromptu, and every, every comment there, they consider a speech. So there were times when, when you'd just literally be put on the spot, you know, and have to give a speech, and then you've got nine delegates from across the United States who have their own opinions, and you're trying to guess what they're going to think and what they want me to say. One time, we met with the vice governor of Tokushima, and the next day, my picture's in the newspaper, and they're quoting me in the Japanese newspaper. I have a copy of that, I'll share with you as well.
Where's the nearest restroom or anything?
The restrooms, at least for the men, are sometimes different than the ones we have here, which, which in a suit and tie, not very accommodating if you're not used to them. The other thing that...
That'll be interesting.
The other thing that's interesting is the, there were three or four, the beds there, if you ever go there, we need to talk. The beds, the beds aren't more than a few feet, maybe 30 inches wide, 32 inches wide, most of them, and many of them are on the floor. Many of them are simply a mat of what, what felt to me like a bag of acorns, but I'm sure to somebody else it might feel soft, that was on the floor, and three or four days of that, and you're, and at least me, I cannot, cannot sleep in that situation. So I was a little bit sleep deprived and just tired. And there were many, there were a few folks on the trip that were in their 30s, and they were, they were shellacked too by the end of the trip, so I didn't feel too bad about being weary. I landed at PDX this afternoon, got home about 2:00, and so I haven't had a lot of sleep, but I'm glad I was here tonight. I can't let the night go by. I know accolades have already been bestowed upon Tony and Jim, and, you know, when you leave your jurisdiction and go to others far away, you hope that they never have to be tested. But, you know, this is a hard thing. Jim has been a police chief a short time. I mean, he's had a pretty, a pretty challenging beginning to have to deal with something like this. It's tough for somebody who's been a chief for a decade, and I think, and Tony, both of them, did an amazing job. And I want to also mention that they're part of a larger team, an executive team, that includes Nancy and John and Scott and other people, Wyatt, everybody that's in this room and others on that executive team. And these guys pulled together and, and did work that we haven't talked about and may never get talked about, but it got done.
Yeah.
And I'm just so proud of them and the way they pulled together, and I'm also proud of the way the commission has pulled together with the community. So I'm glad to be home, and more to come on Japan, though, later.
Thank you. With that, I think it's my turn. I had a, we've had a couple of meetings. The "we" is the, the mayors of, in one case, of the metro region. Periodically, the chair of the Metro Council calls the mayors together to have discussions, and he had some items on the agenda, and when it came to the last one, we pushed in a different item for discussion, and it was a discussion of representation on the Metro Policy Advisory Committee. He was, he's good at listening and having the discussion, and I'm sure some of the suggestions that were made were, will be considered. And not everybody, not all the mayors are unanimous in all the discussion, but there is some membership there that probably doesn't have a constituency that they really answer to, and we think it's critical that any representation be by an elected body. I'm making my statement, some people want to be a little bit more respect, more restrictive is the word I wanted. The, there are many members, many voting members of IMPACT. Some of them represent special districts, and I, and some, some of the mayors have opposition to that. I don't have particular opposition. The concern I have is how they represent the special districts. Do, for example, and this, this is probably an example, one that's not a problem, but there is a sanitary sewer district that represents those kinds of districts, and whether there's communication with the other districts, do they actually serve as a representative? Occasionally, it's been a problem. Each, each county has three cities represented on the Metro Council. The largest city, in our case, that's Lake Oswego. The second largest city, in our case, it is Oregon City. And then a city that represents the small cities, which in our case is West Lynn. In West Lynn, there's great communications between the IMPACT representative to, to metro with the other smaller cities. They're very active in C4, and, and so those issues are dealt with. That hasn't always been the case in Clackamas County. It became clear from the discussions that always, that has not always been the case in Washington County as well. So the question is that these, these entities that represent a broader base of entities, to what degree are they representing the base? That was a concern. Then there are also citizen appointees. Each county commission appoints a citizen, and there's no indication that that citizen represents any person but themselves. So there were concerns about that, and there were also concerns that the metro, the IMPACT agenda is generally set by staff, and the opportunities for members of IMPACT to put things on the agenda really haven't been there, and we had some discussions about The, then the other meeting, Clackamas, Clackamas County Commission Chair Ledlow has begun a series of meetings now, I think this is the first one, meetings with the mayors of Clackamas County to discuss issues that are of common interest, and I really appreciate that. I, at least in my time as mayor, there has been no such dialogue, and I appreciate that. We've mentioned before that we, as a city, we've had, we've had fairly regular meetings with Ledlow. In fact, I think we come, have one coming up this month with him. And, and the communications are, you know, are beneficial to us all. The thing that I wanted to bring up is that we, as a commission, appoint the representatives, the citizen representatives of Urban Renewal Commission. We have seven people that have actually applied for the two seats that we had.
That's wonderful.
It is wonderful. What I have proposed to the city recorder is that we will be getting the, if we, we have, we will be getting very shortly, the applications of the seven, and we're going to schedule interviews. We're not going to have any urban renewal meetings on, two weeks from now. We're going to schedule an interview time with all these candidates. We're going to, we're going to schedule two hours, I mean, seven people, in 15 minutes or so. We'll probably need that now at a time before the regular commission meeting in two weeks. We will not take a vote at that time, but at the first meeting in December, we'll take a vote on the representatives, and my recommendation has been to, and I think we did this the last time maybe, but my recommendation was that we actually do a written ballot with our names on it, which are submitted to the city recorder, they're tallied. If, in fact, we have three of us agreeing on the two the first go-around, then those are, those are the two. If not, then the highest vote count will come back to us for a second, and I hope that will be the final one, but it might not be, in the process, a second vote. And we will, that'll give us a, you know, the better, more than two weeks' opportunity to look at the, look at the applications and consider the interviews that we've had before we meant to vote. And so that's, that's the plan unless somebody has an alternative suggestion.
And the questions that we're asking?
There's a set, there are a set of questions that we might alternate, but that does not preclude, of course, any of us asking another question. I would, sometimes something in the interview will come up that precipitates a question. If you have a question that you, that you want to, that you think should be a general question, feel free to ask it, but you should ask it of every, every person, except the one that's just stimulated by the interview itself.
Yes, absolutely.
Just to comment on that, your binder does include the list of questions, and they were pretty much the same questions, maybe combined a little bit because, but they're the same questions you used the last time that you interviewed, and you had gone over them at that time and chose those, so we use the same ones.
That's perfect, thank you.
So any other suggestions on the process? We'll be notifying then the applicants. I was just really excited when I found out that level of interest.
I am excited about that, yeah.
That's great.
Look for any other reports. Commissioner Smith?
I'm going to, I attended one meeting and another event. I'm going to talk about them briefly because my brain can't handle more than that right now. One of the meetings was the Oregon City Tourism Council meeting, and that is the group that is representative of all the heritage organizations. It's open to anyone that wants to participate. Michelle Benfield is our staff person that helps coordinate that. Alice Norris has helped chair that mainly because I can't always make it to every single meeting, and I wanted her experience to help with that. At the last meeting, we were reviewing projects and making decisions to disperse the $20,000 that we get from the county for tourism. The meeting did not go exactly how I would have liked, and I'll tell you one of the, the issues that, the issue that I brought up, and that was, for decades in this city, we have been trying to get all of the heritage organizations to work together in promoting Oregon City as a whole, rather than trying to compete and to fight over funds and to kind of see themselves as single organizations and really try to promote Oregon City as a whole. And I thought, and I think we have made a lot of progress. This group has always been fairly successful in looking at the $20,000 that we get from the county and agreeing on what to spend that money on to benefit tourism as a whole in the city. Generally, what happens is that we commit as a group to tackle certain types of things like signage, or the trolleys, or other facets that we see are in need for the community as a whole, that all of the heritage partners can buy into. That is not what happened at this meeting. What happened at this meeting was that all of the individual organizations, and actually I shouldn't say all of them, various, it was open, proposals were open to anyone. Proposals came back from individual organizations, much the same way as we do Civic Improvement Trust grants, and then the money was distributed. Now, the proposals that came in were less than $20,000, so everyone that proposed a project got full funding. They were good projects. I think they were projects that will benefit those individual organizations and their events, and somewhat, you know, and actually some of them would benefit the whole city. But I thought that the process was going away from the, the partnerships that we had kind of done, used in the past, and so I was a little concerned by the fact that rather than these groups all working together to propose projects that they were partnering with, they all, these individual projects came up, and everyone who had a project voted in favor of the distribution of funds because they were getting the funding for their individual product, project. So I stated my concern about that, and I stated how I felt that it was kind of going away from what I would like to see happen with, with thinking about tourism as a whole. I told them that I would not vote against the projects because I felt that the projects were valuable, but that the process really was flawed in my mind. So I abstained, but it was passed by everyone else at the, at the group. So I definitely will, I definitely hope that discussion continues because I think we really need to start working towards a broader view of how we're approaching tourism in Oregon City. I think that with the things coming on the horizon, with what's happening on Main Street, what's happening with the mill site in the future, Oregon City is not anywhere close to prepared to deal with people coming into this town. And even in the small extent that I do tours in the city or events in the city, I have found that there's virtually no restaurant that can deal with more than 50 people at a time. There's, you know, very limited ability for us to handle what we hope in the future is large, very large groups. And so I'm hoping maybe at some point, maybe a work session to some degree would be a good idea to, one... a good idea to one, just talk about what we as a commission think about tourism in connection with economic development and where we're going, but also how we might think about allocating monies like OCCIT monies and this county tourism money, if there's some way to utilize those funds in a way that really doesn't, that really thinks about tourism as a whole rather than individual projects that may last a year or two years or five years and be gone. So that's something that I would like to have a discussion on in the future and I think that's about it. The other event that I attended was basically a reception at the end of the Oregon Trail Interpretive Center to thank all of the, all of the foundations that have basically contributed to the reopening of the center through donations to do everything from painting the hoops to putting new signage into the facility, to technology-based equipment throughout the center. It was a great event and Scott was there as well and Commissioner Polly was there. It was, it was a good event.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Yeah, I kind of want to follow up on what you were talking about there with Metro. I attended the Metro meeting back in October. And the one outstanding presentation was, had to do with transportation in the metro area and like you were talking about. And a fact that was given to us was they had been doing a year or a year and a half study, I'm working without notes, I left my notes home, that was dealing with transportation alternatives and what the population wanted in the Portland area. Out of 114 different study dates that were given for people to come do impact or input on this topic, one was in Clackamas County, one was in Washington County.
Yeah.
And so people from both counties were, were speaking up, you know, this is not representative of a metro area.
Yeah.
And I think Metro got the clue that...
That's good.
Yeah, Portland is not the only thing on the map.
That's right. I agree. Thank you.
So that was very interesting. The other thing I'd like to talk about is, is also something that I'd, I'd like to discuss later. And that is commission protocol in times of disaster like we just went through, or not disaster, but you know, times of extreme stress. I know for me, I was really torn this week because as staff and as police officers, everyone is so kind and appreciative to us and so gracious in their reception of us, that I found myself sitting at home thinking, I'd really like to do something, I'd like to go up there and take them popcorn or do something, but I know they're gonna be too nice to me. You know, I just, I just wanted to be of service myself.
Yeah.
And so I would like to really talk about staff protoc, or our protocol in times like that, whether we're a hindrance or a help.
You know, my protocol was, I called Tony, woke him up and said, what's going on?
No! I didn't want to wake Tony up. He sounded like he needed some sleep.
But I knew Jim would be busy. He had his hands full, but I knew Tony would be available.
Tony was just...
And I had to call Tony because David was out of town. Otherwise David would have gotten my 7:00 wake-up.
Well, you know, it's not too different from the, you remember when we passed out the cards during the earthquake event? We designed the system so that you don't have to do very much.
Yeah.
However, you want to do things in a situation like this. So, you know, one of my mayor protests used to be famous for baking cookies and bringing them to anybody who was having a problem in the, in the city.
I wanted to bring peanut butter popcorn.
You know...
I'm sure you still could.
You, you folks can do what you, what you want to that way and I'm sure that the officers would really appreciate any of that stuff that happens. Jim, do you have some?
You know, I, I do. Something that I think is really, really important is, because I've been thinking about this a lot and, and I know from classes that I've gone to, there's a lot of help right now. And in a month, when an officer goes to a call on Lynn Avenue, or there's something that reminds, or in six months, and, and we're gonna be very proactive in how we go at the stressors and these kinds of things for our officers. We're not just gonna hope and look. We're, we're bringing people in to make sure that our, our people aren't affected by this in a couple of years. What I really think is really important is, is your voices in three months, six months, a year, two years, those kinds of things because it, you know, stress for them is cumulative and the stress for their families, the wives and husbands at home, they always get forgotten.
Yeah.
And it took me years to figure that out. I ignored my wife for a long time about, but it's, at one point I finally got it. And so there is really a place for your support in that and so today, but also in the, in the future is, is really gonna be a big deal because there are officers here for 20, 25, 30 years and...
That brings up another point that I had thought about. I've done some researching on this and saw that several police departments, when their reserve officers or their officers are sworn in, that the wife also receives a badge. And I just thought that was a very, very nice gesture and I thought it might be something we'd want to look at.
That's a really good idea. One of the things we started doing a little bit ago was, there's a couple of books that several of our wives said were really helpful. And so we started when we had new officers going, why don't we just hand that out the second they get in here rather than waiting till they're, they're reading a book because things are really bad.
Being proactive.
Yeah, let, let them have it beforehand, so that is something that we've been doing and we're always looking to...
That's great.
Try and get better on it.
Yeah.
Cops learn things by running into walls. We're thick skulls. It's a collection of learning from mistakes over years.
I think it, you know, just from not having any experience with law enforcement and being in, and watching this happen as it did and the way it did, I think with Jim, part of what Chief Bens, you know, didn't say was that while this is going on, it is like a machine. And it's everything, while it may be chaotic and things are happening, but it's going through a process and everyone has a role and a task and there's two or three people that do that and move it along and there's food and there's, it's, things have been thought out. This isn't the first time they've done it. But I go back to what he said about, you know, right now, I'm drawing a blank, when I just had it on my tongue, the soup.
Soup lady.
Yeah, I mean, it's amazing.
I haven't met him yet in a while.
Providing food for the, for, for the officers here. So, but I think it's going back to what Jim said though, is that, you know, these guys in his, his group are never gonna forget this. And it's gonna be, like you said, next week, next month, next year. So hopefully we take that to heart.
And Mayor, I think, I don't know if I mentioned it, but City Hall, once we find out with the day of the service, City Hall may be closed all or part of the day so that all of our staff can have an opportunity to attend.
We'll be notified when that is.
Yes, you'll be notified.
That is, I just, I meant to say that before. Tomorrow morning is, they're gonna release the date and time of the funeral, should be 8, 9 o'clock, that they release that publicly.
Okay.
Okay, other commissioners?
I don't have anything at this point.
Could you mind wanting to talk, share with us about the, the process for selecting the Main Street manager? I think you did before, but since we got to see him, based on...
Okay. Well, there was a selection committee. David Frazier was on that and many others. And they brought to us a list of candidates, narrowed it down to three. And then we, the board interviewed those three. And we were, you know, we were looking at experience and also the next set of skills that are needed to take Oregon City, Main Street to the, to the next level, kind of the next phase of it. And we chose Jonathan and he has the skills needed to do that. And he has only been here for three weeks and it feels like a lot longer already because he is busy making things happen. There's a map now of Main Street and he's got lots of good things to unfold. Tomorrow is downtown discussions at Nebiolo at 9:00 AM and he will be there to, he's already been knocking on doors, meeting people. And we're really looking forward to the next phase of Main Street, Oregon City, being more inclusive, really involving and engaging the businesses down there and we're very optimistic, so...
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments for the go to the order? Yes, ma'am?
Just one, a reminder that Veterans Day is November 11th and City Hall is closed that day.
There is and I don't remember the time, but it's gonna be at the viewpoint on Highway...
To tag along on Rocky's comments about tourism and make an announcement, there will be a webinar given by Travel, Travel Oregon, which is the state tourism department. Because we're members of the Oregon Economic Development Association, so I've registered for that. It's on November 18th. If you're interested, I can send you the link. You're all free to register for that as well. The topics will be how to get looped into the tourism industry's communication system statewide, how to let Travel Oregon know that you're out there and how to get ready for visitors. And then we could also become aware of programs and services that help businesses, organizations and communities draw more visitors, so...
What was the date again?
It's November 18th, from 1:30 to 3:00.
Where is it? Whatever computer you're on.
Yeah, I'm on it.
Can we just say hello to Scott and John and Maureen?
Hello, Scott? Hello, John? How you doing? Hello, Maureen? Hello, William?
We haven't heard anything for the other nights.
You guys are being very quiet working away over there.
William and William Joyce? Mr. Newey? Hello? Maybe anybody else?
I don't think so, thank you.
But then, we'll go ahead and...